We're late. The Board has been in closed session for the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, and approval of August 23, 2016, and September 13, 2016, closed session minutes. There are five board members present, two absent. Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we go into regular public comments, we have a public hearing for the budget. So I'd like to call the public hearing to order. Do I do roll call or voice vote?
You can just do voice vote.
Okay, voice vote. Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're going in, we're just roll call for the public hearing. We have five board members present, two absent. Okay, we have Chris for an overview of the budget.
All right, tonight we have the final budget for consideration tonight. It's very similar to the tentative budget that you saw last month, just some minor changes and updates. On the revenues, we had, we got some additional information about our E-Rate funding. It's going to be less this year than we had in the tentative budget by $60,000. We got a check from ENRNC in the operation and maintenance fund for $115,000, so that's an additional $115,000. And then just a small $10,000 correction in the debt service fund. And then on the expenditure side, we, as we hire in the human resources department, we get more accurate information on salaries and staffing between the tentative budget and the final budget. And in the benefits, we have a January 1 renewal this year. We have consolidated all of our health insurance plans to a calendar year. The proposal right now is a 7.2% increase in the PPO and a 3.3% for the HMO, so we had increased the budget amounts for benefits along with the final staffing figures. Then we had some adjustments between accounts in the learning and teaching department and with the grants, and then we had, we had an additional bus route which increased expenses by $15,000. The mix of revenues, similar to what we've seen in the past, our local revenues at 89% compared to state at 66%, so we're much more reliant on local funding than the state average. We're still, property taxes is our biggest source of revenue, and in this budget, we have, and we have, we're limited to CPI increases which have averaged 1% over the last three years and 1.54% over the last five. This budget, we have the second installment from September 16, which was based on a 0.8 CPI, and then in June, we'll get the first part of the 2016 extension, which is based on the 0.7% CPI. We did budget for four mandated categorical payments this year, the last quarter from '16, and then the first three quarters from '17. Expenditures, it's a similar mix of revenues, or of expenditures, where we are about 65% salaries and 14% employee benefits, so about 79% related to staffing. The staffing numbers here, we've, we've increased 0.8 FTE, so we did, we did reduce the number of FTE between the tentative and final when we, we got more accurate information. And so, but, but the, the, when we filled the vacancies, the salary amounts were less than what we had estimated. So the salaries went down, or the salaries went down, the salaries went up and the staffing went down. But very similar to what you saw last month, the operating funds with a very slight surplus of $87,282. Overall, a surplus of $465,069. The operating funds will, are projected to end the year at 44.76% of expenditures, $51,392,263. The next steps, we'll be monitoring the budget to actual every month. We start, we'll, the enrollment projections are based on September 30, so we'll start working on those in October. They're going to be presented at the second meeting in October. We won't be able to have them ready for the first meeting in October, but we'll have enrollment projections at the second meeting in October, and we start working on, we use the 2017 budget that's presented tonight, and then we get the 2016 audit. We should be getting that next week, I believe. And, but then it's presented to the Board in December, the final audit. And we'll have the levy coming up, the tentative levy, and it's actually going to be in the second meeting in October because we need 30 days between the tentative levy and the final levy. So that one will have to be, the tentative levy will have to be the October 25 board meeting, and then the final levy will be the December 15. Then we, the administration estimates future staffing, and then we'll, we'll be working on the five-year projections. So that, that is it for the presentation.
Are there questions from board members? Chris?
Yeah, I just pointed out, want to point out that this budget is the culmination of something that started last October, and this is something we've been talking about for a year now. In kind of weird fashion, we actually pass the budget after the year starts. But, so there's, there's not a lot in here that hasn't been discussed, there's nothing in here that hasn't been discussed over prior meetings.
Okay, so we'll move to public comments for the hearing, the budget hearing. Are there any public comments for the budget? Okay, hearing none. We'll adjourn the public hearing and return to the regular meeting.
We were informed that this meeting is being audiotaped, but it is not being videotaped due to some technical difficulties, just making you aware of that as an FYI.
We have public comments for the regular board meeting. I have one public comment, Jan Dornar.
I'm with the League of Women Voters of Elmhurst. Next Thursday, October 6, the League of Women Voters of Elmhurst and the other five DuPage local leagues will be partnering with the DuPage Election Commission to bring mock elections to 20 high schools in DuPage. The DuPage Election Commission will supply 10 voting booths, a ballot box, and the AccuScan that will count the votes. The ballots will be printed by the Election Commission and paid for by the League of Women Voters of Elmhurst. The ballots for York will contain President, Vice President, Senate, and Fifth Congressional District candidates, as well as the Safe Roads Amendment. And just to warn all of you voters, this is what the front looks like. I mean, I was bored with it. So this is, this is the stuff about the safe amendment, so you all need to do your homework before you vote. Just wanted to say that we're proud to be able to bring this teachable moment to York. Thank you.
Are there other public comments for tonight? Okay, hearing none. We'll move to approval of board meeting minutes. There are two sets of minutes, August 23, 2016, September 13, 2016. Are there any comments from board members? Okay, minutes will stand as presented. Superintendent's Consent Agenda, items A through G. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Margaret?
Yes, I would like to remove item G, Approval of Online Evaluation Program.
Okay, I need a motion for approval of items A through F.
I move that we approve the Superintendent's Agenda Consent Agenda items A through F.
Second? A second? Okay, moved by John, seconded by Margaret. Good.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes. Five eyes, no nays, two absent, the motion passes. Okay, item G.
Yes, I'm just asking if there-
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess we need a motion on the floor. Do you want, go ahead and make the motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the contract with TalentEd with a one-time training and setup fee of $4,980 and a $20,000 yearly subscription fee for our entire licensed and nonlicensed staff for the first year, increasing by 6% each of the following two years. The total cost of the program in year one is $24,980. In year two, the cost is $21,200, and in year three, the cost is $22,472. The term of the initial contract is for three years and is renewable annually after the initial contract expires.
Okay, first. Is there a second? I didn't see that. Was there a second? Okay.
I second the motion.
Moved by John, seconded by Karen. Okay, discussion.
I'm just wondering if we can get an explanation, a little bit more information on this item, please.
Yes.
Yeah, Jim.
Sorry. This particular system, we have currently, since we began teacher evaluation back in the Stone Ages when the district was founded, have used an analog system of evaluation documentation for all of our staff, both licensed teachers as well as our district office staff, cabinet-level members, principals, cafeteria workers, custodians, and our PSRP group. There are several limitations and some very time-consuming processes that still are running around that evaluation-type system. What TalentEd brings and offers is a completely online digital platform for conducting all of our evaluations of all of our staff in the district who require evaluation. This particular program, I looked at six, all of the main players in the industry, checked references with districts on each of those, and was most impressed both by references, cost, and by the ease of use of TalentEd's platform. TalentEd will come in, they will conduct focus groups with our people, they will train and educate, they will bring together a pilot program, which our principals and many teachers have been clamoring for to get us out of the current time-consuming process that we use. We also now have the capability of seamless uploads from the online evaluation system to the state database that tracks our teacher evaluations and ratings without creating double entry of information taken from an analog platform into the digital to be uploaded to the state, which will save a tremendous amount of time, effort, and energy on double data entry. It will also give us a very concise record that's easily accessible without having to go to a file cabinet to pull a file to look at prior evaluations, and it's an amazing tool for the purpose of also reporting out inter-rater reliability as we work toward consistency in the evaluation of our staff in all areas, and is also reportable. Teachers can search and access reports and look at what their goals have been, what they are, all in one place instead of having to go to a hard copy for their information and also take a look at the areas that they have decided they want to work on. So we're very excited to have the opportunity to move us into the 21st century in technology in terms of our evaluation system. We're a little bit behind, but that gives us a little bit of an advantage. We were able to select the best possible system that's currently on the market. So that's the recommendation and why.
The other question I have, Jim, is I know that this is really automating and using technology for what the state has required us in para.
That is correct.
One last question. I mean, software is a wonderful thing when it does what it's supposed to do. This is a three-year agreement, but I think if I read the termination provision correctly, that if you don't like it at any point where it's going on, we can terminate.
That's correct.
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, it's five eyes, no nays, two absent, the motion passes. Okay, Superintendent's Action Items. Dave?
The first one is the annual salary report that's required, and it is something that we report to the state and then post online. So it's a state requirement. We ask you to do this every year for, for that reason, and we would recommend that you approve it.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the posting of the Administrator and Teacher Salary and Benefits Report as presented.
Second.
Okay, moved by Karen, seconded by John. Any discussion? It's an annual item, very straightforward. Okay, go ahead.
You can take a voice vote on this one.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And a motion passes.
So the second item on there is the budget, present, approval of the budget. You just, we just had the public hearing earlier tonight, so we recommend that you approve our 20, our FY '17 budget.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017 as recommended, and that the President and Secretary be authorized to enact the resolution and certificate of authorization.
Second.
Okay, moved by John, seconded by Margaret. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes. Five eyes, no nays, two abs, and the motion passes.
Okay, the next item, little bit of a change of direction here, which I'll ask Mary to explain. We asked you to, we displayed resources last spring for our new ELA units, and as we're monitoring the implementation, we believe that it is a wise decision for us to reexamine the resources for trimester two and three, and so we are going to explain that to you and then ask that you authorize us to display the new resources that we're recommending so that we can get those ordered and get teachers up to speed with the materials in time for second trimester. So Mary?
Hi. So a couple points I want to make sure that we're all really clear on. The first is that the curriculum that was created by our teacher teams, our curriculum development teams, as I've gotten the opportunity to get to know it, well, it's been very well done. So the work that our teachers have done is great and isn't something that we're setting aside. And the other piece is that this will not be an additional expenditure within the budget. When the materials were ordered last spring, they ordered materials for the first trimester, and then the goal was to give teachers an opportunity to work with the curriculum and then order for trimester two and three. So the shift that we're recommending will use those funds that were already set aside. So what we have found, and this has been through our conversations with teachers, from principal and coach observations and work with the teachers, that the resources selected just aren't giving us the intended outcomes that we're looking for. It's providing, it's proving to be much more difficult for teachers to differentiate the instruction in their classroom with sort of a single resource for those units, as well as without a little bit of a more defined structure of how certain standards can be addressed within those resources. We're finding that teachers are kind of scrambling day to day, as well as they're off on their own looking for additional things to pull in. And one of our primary reasons for having a district-wide curriculum is to have a consistency across all of our buildings, and that was another thing that we're finding that's giving teachers some difficulty, to no fault of theirs. They're, you know, they are working well within what they have, but we feel that these different resources will give teachers a better structure to really make the instructional changes that we're looking for.
No, I was just going to say thank you very much for that explanation, and I think it's, it's really important. It talks about really doing the things that we're supposed to do, we're focusing on, you know, we talked about structure, making sure teachers were able to have the structure that was needed, the support that was needed, and be able to differentiate. And thank you for identifying that need and being very proactive in making that change. Thank you.
I, I wanted to acknowledge the, the feedback that was, was received, was given and received so that we didn't let things linger and that we can solve the solution, solve the problem district-wide and help out utilizing the work that was already done.
Yeah, the work really was well done by the teachers, and this is going to give teachers some additional support as well as, along with the resources, is a very comprehensive professional learning plan for our teachers, our coaches, our administrators, so that will be a portion of it as well.
Question?
Sure.
You mentioned for trimester one, there was, was there a single resource?
There was one, for grades two through five, there was a literary text and an informational text. So teachers were, were utilizing that, looking for ways to, to teach all the standards that were incorporated into that unit. And the resources that we are recommending that we shift to have a variety of texts at different levels for teachers to utilize. And again, it really supports the workshop model, which is where teachers have that ability to really meet all kids where they currently are and help move them all forward.
I know that there was a team that worked on this.
Yes.
And I can't remember if I asked a question, are they continuing on?
Yes.
And they're part of all these decisions too?
Yes.
And input and, you know, how's it going across the district, that sort of thing?
Yes.
Which I like that model.
It is. It's really a good model. Many of our instructional coaches that were from within the district were members of the curriculum development team, so they have, of course, been a critical piece of providing that feedback. I met with all the CDT last week to kind of talk through, to summarize the feedback I had heard to make sure I'd captured it accurately, and then brought them into the fold. And they will continue to come back to revise, revamp. These teams created summative assessments for the ends of, end of each unit, so we'll come back to revisit those, make sure they're capturing what we want to assess. So that will be an ongoing process throughout the year.
Okay, anything else? Did we do the motion? No, I need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the public display of the proposed K-5 English Language Arts Curriculum Resources.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Margaret, seconded by John. Go ahead. I'll voice vote for this, but we're, oh, it was already approved?
We're not yet.
Okay, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, the final, final item, item D, Edison PTA has donated in an amount not to exceed $8,000, purchase of student Chromebooks to help support the mobile learning initiative, and we're implementing this in grades four and five, but in grades, in grade four, it's a two-to-one implementation as opposed to one-to-one as it is in grade five. So these are additional resources in grade four, additional Chromebooks.
I move that the Board of Education approve the acceptance of the donation from Edison School PTA in an amount not to exceed $8,000 for the purpose of, for the purchase of Chromebooks. This donation is accepted in accordance with Policy 8.80, Gifts to the District. I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Chris, seconded by John.
I'll do it, thank you, absolutely. Thank you very much. We have a very generous community that is working with Dave to help outfit our students with the latest in technology, and it goes a long way to help learning in our district. Thank you.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Eubner?
Yes, it's five eyes, no nays, two absent, the motion passes. Superintendent's Communication.
Okay, we had one Freedom of Information Act request which was received seeking information regarding school buses and was granted. We had our first EC12 Principals Meeting on September 27th, or excuse me, on September 15th, and the majority of the time at our Principals' Meeting is spent on our Principal Professional Learning Community work around the goals of the district. And this year, one of our primary books that we're studying is called Professional Capital: Transforming Teaching in Every School, and that is a Michael Fulon and Andy Hargrave's book. Melissa De La Rosa, Erin Deluga, Jackie Di Cipio, Gina Pogue Reader, Tim Riordan, and Rob Wagner facilitated our, our work on chapter one of that book. And then the second part of that, Dave Beatty and Kathy Baker led a future-ready learning session focused on the relevance rubric from the International Center for Leadership in Education's Rigor and Relevance Framework, and I uploaded that in your packet for those of you that are interested in what that looks like. The goal is for it to serve as a coaching tool to help teachers move from where they're currently at in their lesson design and the activities they plan for their students along the spectrum and increase the relevance of the instruction and the activities and the assessments. Also, at the grade-level meetings, the Principals focused on implementing instructional rounds, and Mary Baum facilitates those meetings. the earliest that it could be put to a vote for the full council is October 17. That amount is anticipated to be approximately $1.3 million, and was allocated for this past summer's capital work, and all of the, you know, the parking lot that you see at Sandberg and any of those other things that we worked on over the summer. So I'm pushing them to try to get that taken care of. I think that in their mind, some of these things are complicated a little bit by the other stormwater and IGA work that's hanging out there, though I don't think it should be seen as how this disagreement is entirely separate from that. So that's it for Item C. Item D, okay, yes.
In the, it's in the public documents. Your memo talks about the BRIAN IGA being in limbo. I know it's difficult to, and not always a good thing, to revisit negotiations in public, but maybe you could just give us a brief understanding about what might be in limbo.
Sure. Well, we presented to the city the draft IGA, consistent with what, where the Board's comfort level was. The city's comfort level is not there. And they have asked us to reconsider how we were to approach coming to a final agreement on the BRIAN property that includes a different type of a framework for a final agreement than the one that we currently propose. Todd Faulkner and I met with Jim Grabowski and Andy Acker this morning. Andy's the city's attorney. We're going to get a little more clarification what their ask would be, but we have a general idea what they're thinking. And we will be getting information to this board within a couple days for it to, for us to kind of clarify what that means in greater detail. And then hopefully, we would be able to discuss this at the October 11 meeting and continue progress, or decide if we are interested in looking at it differently.
Thanks for that update, Dave.
The School Library Grant Program, this is an annual requirement as well. We are to agendize the library grant and report out the dollar amount that we are eligible for. So we'll be receiving $6,000 for resources for our libraries throughout the district. And that can include traditional books, as well as other types of audiovisual materials and electronic resources as well.
That concludes superintendent's items, so we move to board communications. Any board communications? Okay, go ahead.
I was the school board representative to attend the District 205 Foundation meeting, last meeting. You know, it's great that we're doing this and working together. Everything was great on the agenda. It was good to see, you know, all the details that are, you know, and the projects that they're doing. Long laundry list. But one thing that I thought was exciting was the partnership opportunities in grants and working with businesses for, like, student internships and those sorts of things. And granted, this is at the early stages, but I really loved hearing in another meeting, you know, where the community, like the chamber, you know, Dave has been working with a lot of different organizations in the community, and District 205 Foundation is involved. You know, Malia, so there's a multifaceted approach, working very collaborative and teamwork on exposing our students to real-world, you know, applications of, you know, how does the education work with the job that I would do? And that they can start to be exposed to certain professional careers, if you will, even in high school. So I thought that was very valuable to share with everyone, great efforts of collaboration. And I love the organically grown ideas and multifaceted approach to broadening education that we've been talking about for a while.
And I'm actually going to talk about an upcoming event on October 3rd with the Focus 205, and I'm going to ask Malia if she would want to just kind of give any preview on that and extend a special invitation to all those in the community.
Thank you, Margaret. I actually had handed materials to Shannon. But October 3rd is the continuation of our Focus 205 Community Engagement Program. It will actually be the fifth large group town hall meeting. It's at York High School in the Commons from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Everybody is invited. We want everybody, anybody and everybody to come, so not just parents and staff members, but also grandparents, community members, business members. And Dave Moyer will be presenting, along with Mary Baum. And we're going to have a celebration and a review, really, an overview of sort of what took place last year in Phase One of Focus 205. So we'll be doing a little review, we'll be touching base with participants to see if we heard them correctly and if the community still supports those ideas. So it's really important that we get feedback. We're asking people to RSVP at www.focus205.org. We do have a button up there now, so that people can RSVP. And especially if you need childcare, we would appreciate that. We are providing free childcare, thanks to the York Key Club and NHS students. Shannon, anything else you want to add?
Can you say a brief statement about the Thought Exchange Survey? Because that's new for us.
How about we have Dave talk about that? He really does a good job of that.
When I prepare. Well, the Thought Exchange Survey is a very important aspect of this. We think it's going to help us get a deeper understanding of where the community's at with educational priorities and facility priorities. And it's a little bit different than a traditional survey in that the first shot, it's a multi-phased approach, and the first is more open-ended, but then once some of the answers come in from the community, the second phase is more interactive, and then people get to see what other people's thoughts were and react to those thoughts. So it's not your typical close-ended survey, and we're very intrigued by the possibilities and looking forward to see what type of information that brings to us.
And again, anybody in the community can participate. We'll be putting out a link through Talk 205 and on our websites, and I hope to send something to the newspapers, too. So it'll be October 3rd through 13th will be the initial phase of people signing in and getting going with answering the three basic questions that we're putting out there.
Great, thank you. I had one item. I wanted to give a record of our retreat last week, the Board Cabinet Retreat, which we had last Thursday, and wanted to recap having Ray McNulty in the district from the International Center for Leadership in Education. And some of the things we talked about, and Ray presented a lot of these concepts, is what the education landscape is right now, and then what future-ready graduates are, what that looks like, and then how to have leadership to prepare those future-ready graduates, how we're going to prepare kindergartners that have a long time to go in our system, and how we're working with the high schoolers. So it's looking at the leadership to lead change, to prepare future-ready graduates. And then we also talked about the Board's role in supporting the leadership needed to do that, and we talked about our student achievement objectives a bit. And we're going to continue the conversation, too, with one more board retreat. Thank you for RSVPing. That will be end of November. So we'll wrap up our board development work then. So we had a really good session. I don't know if there are any other comments for board members from our retreat last week, but I really enjoyed having Ray come to our district. And then, do you want to mention that he worked with the Principals? It was a full day for him?
Yeah, it was a day full of surprises, too, but he came into the district, and we utilized his services as well in the afternoon to work with our leadership team. And it was obviously some similar information, but the afternoon session was geared more toward our Principals and the evening session more toward board members. But some of us who were at the conference in June saw Ray present, and we thought it would be particularly valuable to have kind of a group experience around those ideas so that we could, you know, develop kind of a common approach and just deepen our understanding as a group. And I really was hopeful that we could utilize his services for that in the afternoon, because the people that were in June had such a positive experience with that conference in terms of the things that we could specifically and concretely take back to the district, that I thought if we could expand that to the larger group, you know, we were going to do some of that work anyway, but to have him in the district in person facilitating some of that, I think, was just a great opportunity. So that worked out pretty well.
So two things that I would add to that is, if I recall correctly, we'll have a follow-up discussion at a future board meeting from the standpoint of, my first point is, it was great to have someone like a Ray come in who works worldwide and nationwide, and then how it relates to the work that we're undertaking, as it relates to, you know, what, four or five years ago, when, you know, we kept hearing that community members, employees, you know, and students, everyone wants us to be, you know, visionary, moving us, moving our district forward cohesively as a district. So it was great to see all that, see it all fit in the picture, from big picture to specifically to what we're doing and the linkage. And so the second point is that we'll try to share it with everyone who was not able to be at that meeting and hear it firsthand, and then link it to district goals. So I just thought I would share that with everyone.
Okay, thank you. Upcoming meetings, Tuesday, October 11th, Board of Education meeting, Tuesday, October 18th, Finance and Operations Committee meeting, Tuesday, October 25th, Board of Education meeting. Oh, the Finance Committee meeting, 6:30 on the 18th. Okay, we've reached the end of the agenda. I'll declare the meeting adjourned.